Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Community High School District 128. It is 4:40 PM. If we could stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call when you're ready, Carol.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Mittalish Cotwall.
Yeah.
Sonal Kulkarni.
We note six of our seven members are present. Sonal is just walking in, so would you like to... So now is here. Okay, so we note all seven members present. The first item on our agenda tonight is to convene in closed session. May we please have a motion to convene in closed session?
Carmichael's second.
Thank you. When you're ready, Carol.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes and we are now convened in closed session. Ready? Okay. Can I have... Oh. Cara's here. Oh, but Kara's still not here.
You have to go downstairs.
Huh?
Just wait a minute, it's all...
It's exposed.
There's supposed to be six? Why could it be seven still? Well, that's why it was so long-winded. Something should've told me. I thought it was seven. Oh, we have plenty of time.
Looking for a motion and a second to return to open session at 6:32 PM?
Batson, so moved?
Carmichael's second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So we are back into open session. I'd like to review the agenda quickly before I turn it over to Bryant Kelly for an announcement. We will be resuming at item number five, communication, where we will have an invitation for public comment. We will have our teacher union report, as well as our educational support professionals' union report. Then we will review FOIA requests, as well as good news. The consent agenda includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion, educational tour requests, employment matters, bills payable, financial reports. These items have gone through board committee review and recommendations, and documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members, as well as the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items can be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I know we did have a note about the consent agenda minutes.
Yeah, when we do the consent agenda, we can just do that in the conversation.
There is just a date correction that we need to address, so we can approve them with an amended date. Then items for action. We've got items coming out of P&amp;P, including board policies, second reading and adoption, employment of employees, memorandum of agreement for the assigned duty stipend position, discussion of the 2025 and approval of Illinois Association of School Boards member dues, the semi-annual review of closed session minutes, the fiscal year '25 final budget adoption, and the fiscal year '24 audit engagement letter. Then for information, we will have the superintendent's report. Do we have any ISB report tonight? Not tonight. Any board comments and events we'll discuss then. Do we have a seat all report? Yes, we do. Thank you. And then we will discuss future agenda items and move to adjourn. Now I'd like to turn it over to Bryant Kelly for just a moment.
Before we begin the meeting, I just... If we could all just observe a moment of silence in memory of Vernon Hills Special Services teacher, Rob Fisher, who recently passed away. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like... Do we have a sign-in sheet tonight? Thank you. So first this evening, Mr. Tim Anderson, please.
Good evening. The board president, Jim Batson, know who I am. To the new board members, I came to board meetings for 10 years. In fact, my attendance at board meetings and FNF meetings was better than any board member for a 10-year period. I remember what happened, and it's the history that bothers me. On today's agenda, you are having the motion to hire Ellen Maurer, former board president, secretary to the board, who in 2017 was indicted by the grand jury of Lake County for felony perjury. She remained on the board for one year while under this indictment, and then pled guilty. She was always gonna be guilty, because had there been a trial, both Prentice Lee and Pat Gruddy, unindictable conspirators, would've had to testify to their involvement in those issues. She pled guilty after one year. She stayed on the board during this period of time. This policy... This school has had a policy of zero tolerance for lying and cheating. By hiring Ellen Maurer, an admitted convicted criminal, a misdemeanor to save her pension, but still indicted for felony perjury, cheating is cheating, whether you make it a misdemeanor or felony, to have her on the staff sends a message to every student that if I get suspended in any way or shape or form for cheating, perjury, plagiarism, or anything, I will just come before you and say, "You don't have zero tolerance. You've tolerated it." Matter of fact, you have it as a board policy historically to have board members serve while they're under the indictment. Jim Batson, this happened on your watch. You've been the vice president since 2015. You've been there for nine years, under your watch. You had the water polo incidents. You had the bid springing on the sprinkler heads here at Vernon Hills. You have been here for all sorts of criminal actions, including the Ellen Maurer issue. The new board members, you weren't here for that. You don't know the history of this school. Board president was chosen to replace Ellen Maurer, and there's no doubt in my mind that Pat Gruddy and Prentice Lee explained to her, "Asking you to replace Ellen Maurer." Please do not address the reason why you're getting this position. Kind of whitewash the fact that you're replacing someone who was pled guilty to cheating, and now you want to add her to the staff. The insensitivity to the public, to the students, is staggering. You've all been elected independently. You don't run on a ticket or a party. You have free will. Use your free will. You've got to stop this somewhere. There are other issues that are gonna be brought up after I get done. But on this issue, you do not add an admitted criminal for lying and cheating to your staff, and she did it while she was here as a board member.
Mr. Anderson, that's three minutes. If you could just wrap up your comments, please.
Oh, I think I've wrapped it up. I'm addressing you and the public. Free will, use it.
Next is Marnie Navarro.
Good evening. I'm Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident, proud District 70 and 128 graduate, and mother of a current gifted District 70 student. I speak for myself. I and many others are thickened that this is where we find ourselves within short weeks after the 24, 25 academic school year, wherein hundreds of students, mainly but not exclusively incoming freshmen, are being led to slaughter. And the saddest part of all is that we didn't have to do any of this. Superintendent Herman is unwisely launching four unsupported initiatives and has repeatedly and affirmatively misled this board and community that we are legally obligated to do so, or that we risk a litany of perils, loss of recognition, loss of IHSA standing in the ability to compete in sports. Nonsense. Lies. Scare tactics. EOS, heterogeneous classrooms, and equitizing grading are not mandated whatsoever. Contrary to Superintendent Herman's contention, 7030 does not require her version of heterogeneous classrooms, which, by the way, is code for eventual detracking. We could've paused or abandoned these unwise and unsupported initiatives entirely back in March. We can still abandon them today and save our students from the impending and devastating impact from launching them without fidelity. You could stop this recklessness. You can still act. The first step is removing Superintendent Herman, as there can be no repair with her at the helm. She has consistently proven that she is neither competent nor worthy of the blind trust that some of you have placed in her, and simply incapable of listening and non-receptive to any input. Every day that she remains at the helm of our district, our district is exposed to more liability and is further away from beginning the long and costly path towards repairing the mess that she has created. Superintendent Herman has had three years and has wasted millions of our taxpayer dollars. What do we have to show for it? 99.2% of teachers who vote no confidence and call for her immediate termination. Multiple racial discrimination, harassment, and retaliation claims have cost, and will continue to cost, our district hundreds of thousands of dollars. No MTSS to support the hundreds of students being placed into accelerated courses beyond their abilities or preparedness. And the real kicker is that the APA, the only one of the four initiatives that is a mandate, doesn't even require us to do what Herman is doing. While a mandate, our district has discretion as to its implementation. It requires our district to utilize an assessment process that includes multiple valid reliable indicators. Yet Herman is only using a single dated PSAT score. So even under her own twisted interpretation, she's still not in compliance with the APA's plain language. Second, a mandate is not a mandate without teeth. It's nothing at all. The APA does not require the disbanding of our entire once-blue-ribbon curriculum. There's no penalty for non-compliance. We could've complied with the simple tweaks to our existing placement structure, which always allowed open enrollment, simply with clear communication. We parents have met with the Lake County Superintendent of Schools. We have panned with neighboring districts to see whether and how they are approaching the APA. No other district is doing what Herman is doing. None, and that is because she is wrong. We are the laughing stock of the North Shore. Superintendent Herman has recently bundled the APA entirely to the grave detriment of our students. And instead of pausing and doing the due diligence to get it right as to whether and how, we have... All we have attempted to do is to cobble together MTSSs in a few short months.
That's three minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
Sure. MTSSs have taken our peer district years to build. Herman has hemorrhaged millions of dollars on EOS and DEI versus building our much-needed MTSSs. We simply cannot build operational MTSSs from the ground up in a couple months. It is delusional to think that we can. The first step is acknowledging that mistakes have been made. Listen to our students, teachers, parents, and community. Bearing your heads in the sand is not a solution. Plunging our students off of a cliff for personal loyalty or ego is also not a solution. Staying stuck on stupid is not a solution. Some costs are sunk. Fire Superintendent Herman, so we can start the long and costly work of repair. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board for public comment?
Do you need to address too?
No.
Michael Schenk, how are you? Okay, so Vernon Hills High School was established 25 years ago. In those short years, it's developed into a fine institution for our children. Accolades, pont accolades, blue ribbon, top 10 in the state in a recent ranking, nationalized, recognized fine arts department, athletics, extracurriculars galore, and of course, our academic programs. We have teachers and staff that have been here since day one, who have primarily been responsible for putting Vernon Hills High School on the map. Staff that care greatly for all students, regardless of background. They work hard with those entering ninth graders that might be struggling, because they know these students may not have had an early education opportunity, early intervention, student mobility issues, unstable households, and other domestic issues that cause real-life stressors on these kids before they enter the doors. The teachers know the mission is, when every child walks in the door at 14 years old, they leave as a young adult at 18 years old. Our teachers and staff know they will leave with the foundations to carry them forward into their next phase of life. Teachers and staff are all mystified now how we all got to this moment in time, of something they all worked so hard to build to get the results and become a high-performing district has gotten so bad in two short years. They are heartbroken. They feel they don't matter to leadership, and our families feel the same way in our community. And it's just not... And it's not just a few of us, as you all might think. It's many. We are here for one reason only. We got to this reason... We got to this point for one reason only, excuse me. Poor leadership. All the traits of a poor leader are being exposed. Poor communication, no collaboration, opinions of teachers and staff not taken seriously, excessive financial spending on programs that have not shown positive returns, and of course, micromanaging. And of course, the hiring and resignations of a few top administration positions recently, of which cost and will cost the district significantly, both of them citing problems with this current superintendent. Morale is in a big hole. 99% of teachers, as you all know, voted no confidence. There's no way out of this hole on this current path. You seem to all be using your defense mechanisms to justify everything will be okay, but fail to look at the facts. You're implementing four new initiatives next year, way too many for any established professional organization of this size to absorb and implement properly. Stop convincing yourself you can just fix the failures on the go, because we all know it'll be the student who will be first to fail. You know what are trademarks of good leadership? Start with supporting your staff. Don't treat or talk about them behind closed doors as the fly in the ointment. Listen to them, collaborate with them, work together to implement one initiative at a time, so they all feel accountability and be able to admit when you're wrong and course correct as needed. The board needs to act now. All the red flags were there before the superintendent hire and ever-present today. There's no evidence we will continue on the path of a high-performing district next year under these new initiatives. In the meantime, the hole will get deeper and will get close to impossible to get out under our current leadership. Many know April elections will be the turning point, but it's time to make a change now. And I'm sure Dr. Herman will be watching at some point. Dr. Herman, you said sometimes a leader has to walk down the dark road alone. Turn around. Unfortunately, nobody is following you. You are on that road alone. Board of Education, don't take our district down the road. Please act and make a change now. Thank you all.
Anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Board members, I know that you have other places you'd like to be tonight. I just wanna say thank you for you serving. Last time, two meetings ago, Dr. Herman spoke out with a... Looked like it was a pre-written response to the overwhelming presence of community and teachers about being courageous. Luckily for me, I was... I'm a product of Catholic school system, and to me, courageous is the nuns that would work for $25 a week. Obviously, they were doing it for the love of teaching and for the love of the children. Down the street, North Chicago High School, Dr. Price, he took... He's superintendent in North Chicago High School. He took that job, I think, in 2017. Graduation rate then was 54%. He's looking in next year to have it closer to 94%. Those are two examples of courageous. Not coming here with a $100 million budget. Graduation rates above 90%. Community's doing pretty well. I just don't see what's so courageous about what Dr. Herman has done here. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I really wanna know... Want you to know that I appreciate the time you do spend here. And it's sad and exhausting to watch you against us. We are here. Some of us, we've known each other. We have kids, same age. Mrs. Hessel, you know people. They live down the street from you. But why are we... You know, I don't wanna say fighting, but we're disagreeing a lot. And to your point, two meetings ago, where you did address me, I was surprised. All I meant to say was that when you joined the board, you were on a mission to do great things. And you still can, but we spent too much time over this topic. All of you, we're all neighbors. We've known each other for a while. I think Dr. Herman thinks that there's some things that need to be fixed in this school district. She is an outlier. We've known each other for years. We've been living here for 20 years. If she believes that, it's almost a criticism of what we've witnessed get built. So all I'm saying is, I wish we could just agree on something, like back and forth. Thank you for your time. One last thing, I'm sorry. I started out about in December. This is... Changed the topic a little bit, more for Mr. Stanley. I haven't seen anything on that $91,000, and I know, Mrs. Hessel, you said I would get some kind of response. I think it got lost in the past few meetings, and maybe it was addressed at one of the last meetings. And I just couldn't hang on as long.
We can email you.
Okay, so basically, it's done deal, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening. I'm Anne Landgraf. I've been here several times already. I'm addressing the board as a previous board member and saying that as your... Your main job is to oversee the superintendent. She's your only employee. And she is the one that you are supposed to take note of what she's doing and to trust of what she's doing. I know I had 100% trust in the two superintendents I had worked with before. And it seems like you're backing her with blindly when the whole bunch of the teachers and a whole lot of people in the community are coming and questioning the things that she's doing. If all these people are questioning, particularly the faculty is questioning, you gotta question too. And if the people in the audience can find the information about all these initiatives and that they're not necessary, why haven't you done your due diligence to look into that? I'm just saying you should do your job. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, sorry. Hi, Gwen Jansen. I had an opportunity to email some information to the board members over the weekend, and I thank you all. I know you have a lot of information to go through with board packets and everything, so I really thank you all for taking the time to digest those emails from me, and I'm sure from other people as well, but I wanted to share some of my thoughts with everyone tonight, because tonight, we're gonna have a diagonal mover update. We've historically been told that the ninth graders have been left off of the diagonal mover updates, because technically, they don't fit the term diagonal mover. This term, of course, was chosen and defined by the district leadership team, but the real reason the ninth graders have been left off, to my view, is that they ruin the data that paints the picture that nothing much is changing because of the district's interpretation of the application of APA. In fact, we are adding 13 sections of honors and AP courses. As I know you saw in the board packet, eight sections at VHS and five sections at LHS. You may have noticed that those are the exact eight and five sections that were highlighted in the FOIA regarding freshman courses. So all the changing, the big, huge 13 extra honors and AP, freshmen, the kids that were left off the data. And when you get into this diagonal movers update, you may hear people telling you that the increase in the total sections is really only a marginal one when compared to the numbers that they have successfully managed in the previous years. But when you're hearing information like that, let's not forget that the course optimums have changed, as you know, per the most recent teacher contract. So students are being placed in sections in greater numbers than in previous years. And assuming no classes over the optimum of 25, that means we might have as many as five to seven more students than we had in previous year's sections. So the number of students increasing, their advanced course load is more meaningful than the number of sections. Also, it would be folly to ignore the fact that students placed in previous years' advanced sections were more stringently vetted to have the requisite skills and preparation for the demands of those courses. Freshmen were traditionally placed using a combination of data, including eighth-grade teacher recommendations, PSAT scores, MAP, or STAR, or I-ready scores. We now only use one significantly reduced PSAT benchmark score. So it's important that we look not just at how many students are taking on advanced coursework, which we know is significantly greater than previous years, but, um, how well prepared those students are. The past students were triple checked to be ready for the courses they were recommended for. And it's not just an increase in numbers, it's the decrease in preparedness that is worrying me. And also worryingly, parents weren't given the necessary context to make informed decisions about those placements. School starts in seven weeks. We really need to be openly identifying and acknowledging the mistakes that were made so that we can begin working towards solutions to minimize the damage that has already been done in placing so many students in accelerated coursework beyond their preparedness. And as you move forward, I hope that you all have the humility and the perspective to acknowledge the failures and the missteps that led us to our current predicament. I also hope that you have the integrity, the courage and the forbearance necessary to be the kind of leaders and problem solvers that our students and our teachers are going to be needing moving forward. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is John Hasser. I am now down to one student at LHS. I just have a question about the metrics associated with the initiatives that you guys are planning. A couple of months ago, there was a presentation that indicated somewhere right around 60% of the students in math and English are reading, able to do math and English at a grade level. I'm wondering what the objective is. Where do we plan to be at the end of this year, next school year and five years from now? Are we going to be back where we were 2019? Is the objective to get to a hundred percent? I'm just kind of wondering what the, what the goal is with what we're doing. Thank you.
Sir, since we didn't have you on the sign in sheet, we don't have your email. Would you like to email the board that question so that we can have the specifics and then someone can reply to you? Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board for public comment?
Good evening, John Hetzel. Last May, we received this strategic plan. Page five. Seems like it contradicts what you have here to what's been going on. One of the bullets is make decisions without the use of pertinent data provided by the relevant stakeholders. Another bullet is adopt any new program or service unless it is accompanied by staff development needed to implement effectively. Accompanied by the means to assess its effectiveness, staffed and funded sufficiently. It doesn't seem like we're really going in that direction. Doesn't seem like we're adhering to that. So I ask you as administrators, as board members, to really reevaluate where you're at. You've heard enough about what the community thinks of Herman, as well as several of the board members who remain steadfast in ignoring the information and data that's been presented. Collectively, community members, parents have put in hundreds and hundreds of hours and cost us much and lost time and money. You're not only affecting the school district with your decisions, you're affecting families. And that's the reason why you've become pariahs in this community, because nobody supports you at this stage. You don't have the community members. I imagine all the 4,500 parents here, somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000 are fully aware of what's going on now. You have 261 of 263 teachers that don't support your superintendent. But we have at least several board members that remain steadfast in their support. Yet you don't even adhere to your own strategic plan because you're not even providing the data necessary. Us community members are coming back with better, more informed data and information than what Mrs. Herman has given us or you all have given us. And that's wrong. That's not a good place to be. So let's get this district straightened out and do the right thing. You know what you need to do. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move on and invite our teacher union report.
Hello, I'm Monica Caldecott, president of the D-128 Federation of Teachers. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I am very pleased tonight to be followed at this podium by our partner union, the D-128 ESP Union. Makes me very happy to see two union reports on the agenda. And I look forward to continuing our partnership with our, our colleagues. It has been one month since our union declared that we have no confidence in Superintendent Dr. Denise, Dr. Denise Herman. For the good of our school community, we had to speak up and say how her poor leadership has harmed the excellent schools that our students, their families and the taxpayers of D-128 deserve. It has been about 20 minutes since the school board met in closed session to complete, to review their annual evaluation of your one employee, the superintendent, Dr. Herman. We appreciate how board members allowed our input into this year's evaluation. More in a minute about that evaluation. It was one year ago at the May 2023 school board committee meetings that marked an important point in Dr. Herman's relationship with our educators. Focusing on that time can help paint a picture of her lack of leadership and her inability to accomplish the goals that she sets. In May 2023, Dr. Herman started by saying that people are exhausted. She used a picture scale of different sloths. And then she proceeded to share a passage from Superintendent Magazine that said morale everywhere is at an all time low. She said, despite our best efforts, we are kind of at a loss. Her point was to show that the staff morale problem in District 128 was common with other districts, while also giving the feeling that it would be hard to solve. In May 2023, Dr. Herman then shared some of the greatest areas of need from a staff panorama survey taken that year. The biggest areas of need our educators identified were school leadership, feedback, coaching, school climate, staff leadership. When sharing the codes for free responses, the top responses shared were ask and listen for our feedback. Trust us as professionals. Understand my role. Staff well-being. Stop making large changes. And more time. In May 2023, Dr. Herman listed what she was going to do to address teacher morale. She said she would be continuing the labor management committee, using hashtag celebrate 128, including staff wellness activities at institute days, increasing administrator classroom visits, establishing a staff wellness and morale team, and aligning administrative goals with the climate. We feel that many of the goals laid out to address the morale issue have been forgotten. So I'll go by, I'll go through one by one. Labor Management Committee already existed before Dr. Herman said these goals. So it's hard to evaluate a goal that continues something provided for in our collective bargaining agreement. However, I feel that our union's recent overwhelming vote of no confidence gives all the evidence needed about how that worked out. Hashtag celebrate 128 was abandoned. This was per the recommendation of an outside communications auditor, the district paid to advise them. So I guess this ending is understandable. Regarding wellness activities at staff institute days, we had nothing at the disastrous October 2023 Institute Day, which was planned and led by administration. At our February 2024 Ed X Day, which was planned and executed by educators, our union educators and others were allowed to offer wellness activities. But the wellness sessions were all booked at the same time slot, limiting the impact of this wellness outreach. Also, any staff presenting a wellness session did not get to be an attendee of any other wellness session. This equates to about 45 minutes of staff wellness activity for the school year. Is one 45 minute session and not for all, across all professional learning days adequate? Our answer is no. Another idea Dr. Herman gave in May of 2023 was to increase administrator classroom visits. This was also formalized in one of her 2023, 24 superintendent goals. All D-128 staff members were assigned to meet with a representative of the district leadership team. The plan was for educators to meet for about a half an hour with their department's assigned district leadership team representatives, either on a one-on-one basis or with colleagues. DLT representatives also offered to come and observe classes. However, many educators assigned to Dr. Lucenia Sanchez and Dr. Eman Alex Owen, two district administrators who left the district during the course of the school year, never got this promised connection. We witnessed Mr. Kelly meeting educators during finals week in May. Such a delay negates any progress towards this goal. Union members reported the conversations felt inauthentic since some administrators are rarely seen in schools otherwise. Dr. Herman's connection and collaboration plan also called for job shadow days, which never occurred. The, on the list, staff wellness and morale team established. The fact that I'm shrugging my shoulders may show that if this ever happened, I surely can't explain its impact if any. Align administrative goals with the climate. This may be the biggest failure. Our union's vote of no confidence covered this thoroughly. But simply put, the goal was to improve the relationship between the labor unions and District 128 administration. Not only did things not improve, they got worse. By our count of the six staff morale go, goals, Dr. Herman set for herself in the district in May 2023, we don't see any of these worthy of a passing grade. Furthermore, it is worth noting, the district asked about staff morale as part of the continuous improvement survey given in December 2023. This data was not shared with anyone. We were only aware of how poor the results were because community members shared with us the results received through Freedom of Information Act requests. We feel that the teacher morale problem is a great example of how Dr. Herman lacks any effective accomplishment of her goals. We concede that schools do not exist so that teachers are happy. We are here to make sure that our students have the very best learning opportunities and support provided to them. But I think any employer knows the importance of making sure that employees feel valued and are proud of where they work. In District 128, we have also been looking to accomplish these goals via our strategic plan. So let's focus on the follow, follow through of those initiatives and see if they have fared any better than the staff morale goals we just reviewed. In January 2023, there was a presentation to the school board about the action plans for the various strands of the strategic plan. A lot of the initiatives we are rolling out for the 2024, 25 school year that have raised so much discourse in our district were part of those plans. Before launching into each strand, the following slide was shown. We will not adopt any new program or service unless it is accompanied by staff development needed to implement effectively, accompanied by the means to assess its effectiveness, staffed and funded sufficiently. This leads to what we feel is potentially the largest danger of Dr. Herman's leadership. The execution of the initiatives for the 2024, 25 school year. Please ask yourself if your own strategic boundaries outlined here were followed. Here are our answers. Were these new initiatives accompanied by staff development needed to implement effectively? No. And it seems like the district strategy is to make up for this, is a combination of summer work and professional development occurring while the next school year has already started. Are these new initiatives accompanied by the means to assess their effectiveness? I feel like this question is asked a lot by you, the board. The answer seems to be no or in progress, but certainly not yes. Are these new initiatives staffed and funded sufficiently? Our union gives a loud no to this one. The district administration made staffing decisions in March 2024, months before the latest version of the MTSS plan was ready. Dr. Herman let go certified teachers while at the same time creating non-teaching positions to do teaching jobs with our struggling students. Our educators are qualified and positioned to be more effective in intervention roles than a former elementary school principal trying to help ninth graders with young adult literature or an engineer trying to help ninth graders with biology. Dr. Gilliam made an argument during the May 2024 school board meeting that a lot of the work preparing for the next school year is normally done over the summer. We want to push back on that argument. The boundaries that Dr. Herman established for these strategic plan initiatives were that administrators would not remove or replace programs unless all of these conditions were met. As I sit here now, it looks like we've removed programs without any of these conditions being met. Only a hope that they would be replaced. One of the simplest ways we make programs happening, happen is via staffing. And administration made all of the staffing decisions before finalizing their plans. That is quite a gamble. And Dr. Herman is gambling with the learning experience of our stu, of our students. She is willing to take these risks without the track record for actually following through on her goals. Dr. Herman lacks the humility to understand when she is putting our students at risk of failure. She benefits from having a fantastic staff to execute the plan. And if I'm being honest, I think we may be able to pull this all off. The, but the perceived success of the 2024, 25 school year will not be due to Dr. Herman's leadership. It will be in spite of it. Thank you.
Now I would like to invite, is my mic on? Yeah. I'd like to invite our ESP union up for their first report.
Good evening. I am Lena Skolachi. I'm the secretary of the D-128 ESP Union, here to address the school board on behalf of the D-128 Educational Support Professionals Union. I stand before you tonight, not in public comment, because our union has retained the right to address the board as a result of us unionizing and ratification of our collective bargaining agreement. We are thrilled to finally have our voices heard. Our collective bargaining agreement negotiated on behalf of our union has solidified many opportunities for ESP to finally have a platform to give our members a voice that has historically been silenced. We want to highlight some areas that we feel give our members a voice and some areas that have been left unresolved since ratification. Our collective bargaining agreement has secured a labor management committee. The labor management committee's purpose is to, the labor management's purpose is a committee utilized by labor and management to improve the workplace, to discover, discuss and resolve issues or problems that are not typically covered by a collective bargaining agreement. And to discuss and resolve issues about implementing the collective bargaining agreement. And we look forward to an invitation from the administration to meet. Our members of our IT department are consistently under recognized for the exceptional work and services that they provide to all members of our district and our community. Your expert, your expertise and diligence has been instrumental in ensuring that our technology runs smoothly. We first want to date, we first want to thank them for their dedication to our district. Too often, our IT department is tasked at the last minute with tech requests for events. Too often, our I T department is tasked at the last minute with tech requests for events. Their ability to respond quickly and effectively in these situations is greatly appreciated. However, we recognize the burden that this places on them. Our union has solidified an agreement to form a subcommittee that aims to minimize last-minute requests by encouraging advanced planning and providing our I T department with clear and organized schedule of events and technology needs. We believe this initiative will not only reduce the stress and the workload, but also ensures that our members have necessary time and resources to deliver their best work. We believe that by acknowledging their hard work, we can create a more positive and productive work environment. And we look forward to a future where their contributions are more visibly acknowledged and where you feel fully supported and valued. One thing that has become abundantly clear was a lack of job descriptions for our support staff members. This absence has led to several challenges, including our educational support professionals or E S Ps not having a clear understanding of what their job entails, inadvertently taking on additional work and feeling overwhelmed. We ask that in the spirit of transparency, the job descriptions for all positions in our union are shared with the union. Our contract has negotiated differentials for our staffs who are called upon to offer bilingual support and an educational differential for paraprofessionals who have a bachelor's degree. Although our contract has been ratified, our members have yet to receive any communication regarding the administration's process for determining the eligibility of by of for the bilingual differential. We urge the board to support us in asking for clear communication that aligns the criteria and the process for determining the eligibility for the bilingual differential, along with establishing a process for the bilingual differential, and assurance that our staff will are informed about when they will be compensated. We also want administration to provide instructions to paras about the documentation needed to verify their bachelor's degree, establish a submission process, and ensure timely review and acknowledgement of documentation. We also ask for regular updates to staff about the progress of implementing these differentials, along with clear timelines and expected dates for compensation. We are committed to working with the administration to provide our members with the recognition and compensation they deserve for their valuable contribution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now moving on to FOIA requests.
The FOIA request report is listed for the year and for June two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you for all the time that was spent responding to FOIA requests. Now let's move on to good news.
All right, our good news report, we had sixteen D one twenty-eight Special Olympians that competed in soccer, track, and bocce at this month's state summer games held at Illinois State University. The team brought home four golds, one silver, fifth and sixth place in track events, a silver in bocce, and a state championship in soccer. Members of the championship soccer team are Alejandro Perez Guzman, Chase Miller, Noah Hewitt, Charlie Sampson, Alexis Caligos, Leana Furman, Ben Peterson, Libby Carston, and Hazel Morales. Congratulations to all of our storm athletes and coaches. Vernon Hills Senior Danielle Zinkovich submitted his design to the second annual Are You Really Winning statewide art competition dedicated to raising awareness about problem gambling across Illinois. He received a hundred dollar prize and his illustration will be included in the traveling art exhibition this summer. The competition was open to all high school students, college students, and professional artists across Illinois. His work will be made into a poster and will be part of public art displays around the state throughout the year. Work by Vernon Hills freshman photography student Jordan Hine was selected for this year's two thousand and twenty-four Student Perspectives Student Show in Evanston. L H S freshman Sammy Powers, a French III honor student, was awarded the A F S U S A Global Citizen Scholarship for a month-long language and culture study in Capp d'Al, near Nice, France, this summer. They will spend the month of July at the French Summer Camp, La Centrale Mediterranean, two days, friends, I'm not very good at French. Francesse's Learning French with students from around the world. And junior Madeline Wright, the Vernon Hills top-scoring German III student on the National German Exam, represented Vernon Hills in competition with top scorers from Illinois for traveling prizes. She took part in interviews with the panel of German teachers and won a two-week scholarship to Walde See, the German area of the Concordia Language villages for two weeks this summer. And the district received a letter of thanks for from the I H S A, the Illinois High School Association, for hosting the boys tennis state finals at Vernon Hills High School. This tournament is incredibly large undertaking with three hundred and eighty-four athletes participating and nearly five hundred matches being played over the course of three days. We certainly could not conduct a tournament without the assistance of our member schools. And District one twenty-eight's contribution to the tournament are greatly appreciated. So this is from the I H S A, please share our gratitude with your building administrators, athletic department, Buildings and Grounds Department for their efforts in running the tournament. We are grateful that your school could assist us in enriching the educational experience through interscholastic competition. We sincerely value our working relationship with our member schools. And that concludes the good news report.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, our consent vote agenda. We are looking for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as presented, but.
Yes, so there's one item for discussion. There's some closed meeting minutes that Carol has looked at that is amending the the finish time because there's no date on there. We finished actually the next day.
Because it went past midnight.
Because it went past midnight, so it's just a change in date.
Update, so we are looking for.
Consent vote agenda as amended.
So would somebody like to?
I'm making that motion. I would like to move to approve the consent vote agenda as amended.
Thank you. Can we have a second, please?
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, when you're ready, roll call, please.
Drumkey. Hi. Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. We now move on to items for action and I will turn it over to our P and P Chair, Don Carmichael, to take us through the first five, five items, right?
Really?
Item three, I think, all came out of.
Uh, so board policies, second reading and adoption. These have been looked at at least twice now. There's just one mention of one of the policies that's going to need to be updated again as a result of changes in Title IX. But as they read right now, so far in discussion, we've been okay with them. Are we ready to, or can I have a motion to approve and adopt the twelve board policies as presented?
Hessel, I move to approve and adopt the twelve board policy updates as presented.
Colcarney, second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, Carol, roll call.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Okay, moving on to employment of employees. Brian, do you want to say anything here?
We have our employment of employees, which includes hiring of new administrators, director of student services, certified staff, educational professional or E S P, and coaching extracurricular staff, some resignations.
I wanted to recommend a change. Do we do that now or after?
We can do it now.
I'd like to recommend taking Ellen Maurer off the list. And then I'd like to also separate Jessica Herman into a separate vote. Do we need to talk about why?
Consent agenda, you can do that. Can you do that?
So items for action, if we would like to separate some of the employees and discuss them separately, we can. So do we need a motion to do that, Carol? To separate?
You could have one, you could have, you could have one board member asked to remove one of the, one of the employees from the action item, and then you can vote on them separately. So if you want to, if you want to remove anyone from that list, then a board member can ask, and then you would still have to vote on that. So it's, you know, it's still a vote. You're not removing them. You're removing them from the list that I've submitted as recommendations.
And we'll discuss and vote on each of them separately.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So we don't need to have a motion and a second in order to separate them. Okay, then the action will be amended to remove Jessica Herman and Ellen Maurer from the vote on the personnel report, and we will move those and discuss them next.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay.
So can we go ahead and have a motion to accept the employment of employees, including Aubrey Clement and Hector Hernandez as presented?
Hessel, so moved.
Cotwell, second.
And this includes all the others with the exception of those two.
Correct. Oh, excuse me, and the others listed on the personnel with the exception of Jessica Herman and Ellen Maurer.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, good. So we've had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion there? Oh.
I was the motion and Middleus was the second.
And then roll call.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes. Now we move to the discussion of Jessica Herman. Okay, so we can ask for a motion and a second discussion before the vote.
We should motion and second and then discuss.
Typical.
Yep.
Yep. So can I have a motion to accept Jessica Herman as a, for her employment of employees?
Hessel, so moved.
Batson, second.
Okay, discussion.
Yep, I'd sent a few questions. Do we have any information on that?
So the, so the questions.
To Brian.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the questions, this was the position that was our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. And in looking at this position, we have changed it to a Director of Student Services. And so if you, we already have a Director of Special Services in Kelly Hartwig. This director will work alongside Kelly Hartwig in Student Services. So in our previous position, you know, this person in the assistant position, they oversaw five oh four, they oversaw M T S S. They also oversaw Kelly Hartwig and the Special Education Department. Instead, they're going to work alongside each other, side by side. We feel that that would be much more efficient for us. There also is going to be a cost savings in in this in that looking at almost, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars in salary costs from an Assistant Superintendent to a director. And so if you then look at, you know, the administration having those two positions work together. So Kelly already oversees special education, home and hospital instruction. Those were kind of assigned between Aman and Kelly before. Instead, Kelly will retain, Kelly Hartwig will retain the special education-related services, home and hospital instruction. And then, you know, five oh four alternative education opportunities, M T S S will fall under this position.
But both will report to the superintendent.
They will both report to me, actually.
Oh, they will both, is that how it's been?
So it was before we had, before we had the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Kelly Hartwig had reported to me and and worked with me. Obviously, we work as a team because as Tom moves into his position as Assistant Super for Teaching and Learning, a lot of the things are connected. So, but I would do, I would be the one doing the evaluation and then overseeing them. And then the Director of Student Services would work in consultation with our Assistant Principals for Student Services in Jenny Getch and and Andy Young. And so we're recommending, you know, Jessica Herman. She has done this position at Moonlight High School and at District two fourteen. And we believe that, you know, obviously with the work that we're doing with M T S S and some of the other work, we need this position and we believe that this new setup will be, you know, much more efficient.
You know, I brought up, one of the things when we originally thought, three or four years ago, when we accepted Dr. Herman's recommendation to an organizational change. One of the things was we were actually going to only increase our administrative by point three positions, I'm pretty sure that was the number, and then it was somewhere between sorry, sixty or eighty thousand. So at the time that we agreed to that, one of the things that we all talked about was having some kind of mechanism where we could evaluate how has this organizational change kind of supported our students and our teachers? And we haven't really talked about that. And I am sure, you know, Dr. or Mrs. Herman. Dr. Herman, thank you.
No relation.
No relation, is quite qualified. Except we, we are trying to put, and I don't want to tie anybody's hands into what we're trying to do as far as M T S S either, but we have to recognize that we asked for, how has this position, how has this reorganization benefited the district? Benefiting the students or the teachers? And we haven't really talked about that. And I'm concerned about, are we asked, is this going to be a three-year contract that we're talking about?
Correct.
We are putting ourselves in another position of not discussing what is the benefit of this position, even though I can see it. We just have not had that open discussion of how this has helped. And I am concerned about that.
And I'll just add to that. I mean, I come from a different environment, but whenever a person leaves or that position is unfilled, there's always a discussion of do we need to backfill that position? I'm just used to that, doing it currently at work. If you look, you know, before Dr. Herman's time, this position was occupied, I think Rita occupied two positions, right?
No, Student Services, there was not the connection as much between the buildings that Student Services, you know, were kind of left to their own accord a little bit, and we had a lot of work to do in order to, you know, equitably, you know, serve our students across the district. And I, you know, I look at, you know, some of the things that we put in place from our District one twenty-eight racial equity, diversity, inclusion policy, that, you know, we look looking at systemic support and intervention design for all of our students equitably, and we need this position. I look at some of our strategic plan, goals and initiative with health and well-being, and we need this position. I, you know, it's, it's been difficult. If, you know, we had, I think, Brian, you know, Wegley and Tom and a lot of people stepping in and doing a lot of work, a lot of legwork in the last five months. But when we, you know, when we received the resignation from Aman, we did look at, do we need the position? And that's when we made the decision that I think that if we take that position and take it from an Assistant Superintendent to a director, that it would better serve the district and our students in the end.
How does this position work with our Administrative Superintendent of Teaching and Learning in creating, I mean, what is the, how does this help our plan, help support our students?
Can you take that, Tom?
Yes, the intention is, is that this person would be the expert and the Director of Building Out our M T S S model on the Student Services side regarding behavior, S E L, and emotional support interventions. Teaching and learning, we will be driving the academic intervention build-outs and really focusing in on what do our classroom teachers need, both in terms of resources and in terms of professional learning, to do their best work in the classroom with students. And then the Director of Student Services puts the entire M T S S plan together and makes sure that our L S Ts and all of our student support work is. sure that our LSTs and all of our student support work is being done according to best practice, that our professionals in those aspects are getting professional learning that is tailored to their unique needs and contexts. And that we are also gathering and evaluating data regarding student progress, both from a building-level MTSS model, looking at what's happening at Libertyville, looking at what's happening at Vernon Hills, and then pulling that to an all-district view as well.
And you might, I'm going to apologize ahead of time because you might not, I'm kind of like throwing this at you right now, so if you don't have this answer, I totally understand. But I'm thinking, is we've not had somebody in a role like this in a significantly meaningful way for a while. What, what have we been missing? I mean, where, can you share what the deficit is and what have we been missing by not having somebody in this role?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is, and this is not a criticism of our staff. This is a, the way our system was designed. So we were largely designed as a system to operate what we would call site-based learning and site-based management. So for many, many years, Vernon Hills staff developed, designed, created programs that were needed to support Vernon Hills students, and Libertyville High School was developing, designing, creating programs to support Libertyville students. And there was discussion back and forth between buildings about what was happening, but there wasn't necessarily always a clear expectation that one model or one program that was working very well at one system would be implemented at another. And so what has happened is, at LHS, we have three LSTs who are all very high-performing and work to meet student needs, but are not always aligned in the ways that they work to support students in terms of emotional support, in terms of behavioral support, and in terms of some of the academic interventions that could be applied. Add to that, the LSTs at Vernon Hills that you have, and you have five to six separate teams, all doing great work, but doing some of that work slightly different. From a district standpoint, when we're trying to gather data, it becomes very difficult to evaluate our, we've heard community members ask us, how are we evaluating our success? It becomes difficult to do that if we have six different teams gathering data in a different way, analyzing student behaviors in different ways. So one of the things this position will do is tighten that and say, where do we, across our system, need to be tight in terms of the data that we're gathering, in terms of the interventions we're putting in? Where can we still be loose to meet the unique needs of students at Vernon Hills and Libertyville? They're different communities, and students will always present with different challenges. The Director of Student Services will help evaluate that work. Then in addition, there is, as we've heard, there is a process of really developing systemic MTSS. And what that means is, you as a board would understand, and our community would understand, the consistent practices across our district, where student supports are applied, when they are applied, what a cycle of intervention looks like, what data we're using to enter and exit students from that criteria. That would be coordinated and nurtured, as well as maintained, by the Director of Student Services.
But only for social, emotional, right? Because our more academic is, or are.
Well, but working in tandem with me, we add the academic piece because we have to have both, as you well know, you have to have both sides of the pyramid. You have to have the Student Services, SEL side, and you have to have the academic side. We're about the whole child. And so while that person wouldn't be going necessarily designing and developing the academic interventions, they would absolutely be advising our Teaching and Learning Team on that and on best practices. Like, we would also be sort of advising on, here's what we're seeing in other schools around Student Services, and then this person helps put it all together. So I would be at the Assistant Superintendent level, making sure MTSS is implemented. This person is the expert driving the SEL and Student Services side. The Teaching and Learning Team are the experts driving the academic side. We also think this position, I just, I could speak for a long time, and this wasn't on the agenda, but because of your question, the other piece is this position will have an important role working with our Deans around behavior as well. And Bryant alluded to that. We have policy that we, as administrators, are beholden to, to monitor and track and make sure we are implementing disciplinary practices equitably and fairly across our system. And right now, we don't have a district-level position that is coordinating all of our data. We have a Building Assistant Principal for Libertyville High School, who coordinates the three LSTs. We have a Building Assistant Principal at Vernon Hills, who coordinates the LSTs. But we don't have a district-level person who is there. Oftentimes, when a building has questions about student disciplinary or behavioral issues, the call would go to Kelly Hartwig regarding Special Services, or Bryant Kelly regarding legal aspects of that. This District Director of MTSS will also be a person who is our point person for our Deans and our Assistant Principals of Operations, or, excuse me, Assistant Principals of Operations, so that when we have disciplinary questions or concerns or very difficult situations, they are the person who can provide the time. Those situations, as you may know, can be extremely complicated and require a lot of in-depth processing and time to make sure that all of the important things that need to be done are being done correctly and being documented correctly. It has become very, it has become much more sophisticated in the last several years with concerns about student mental health and when can students be removed from school? When do students get to return to school? How do we do threat assessments? All of that is very detailed training. And while our Deans and our administrators get that work, this person would become our expert in that and would be the go-to person for when we are working through disciplinary situations to ensure that our students and our staff and our families are all being supported in the proper ways.
So one question, Tom. I mean, and thank you for explaining all this. We don't have that position right now, or someone has not been functioning in that position. So are we saying that these things are not being done in the district right now?
They're not being done as well as they could.
Correct.
So they're being done at a, at a very strong level at the buildings, but we have differences between Vernon Hills and Libertyville High School in terms of how we have approached some of these things in the past, or how our teams may operate right now. Some of those differences, I anticipate, will remain because they've been designed to meet unique needs of the schools that are in place and the populations who are at the schools. Some of those, though, are, are from a standpoint of us looking at, how can our system improve? There are practices that could become more efficient, both for our staff, so that they're not spending as much time, and for our students and families to know that it's fair and consistent across the system. And that as a district, then, we could say, there are areas where we see some practices that are supporting students at Libertyville High School. Let's make sure those are brought to Vernon Hills and adapted in ways that support this. There are practices at Vernon Hills that might be working really well for students here. Let's make sure Libertyville is aware of those practices and knows that they're, to implement them as well. So while that does happen, absent this position, you don't have a district-level point that is constantly bringing information from both buildings together and assessing it through the lens of Student Services, and then making those decisions and making, bringing the teams together to develop the efficient models that both schools can, can utilize. Like, right now, it would be me bringing stuff representing Libertyville, John bringing stuff representing Vernon Hills, and us sort of saying, well, I'm biased, and my job is to serve Libertyville High School. John's job is to serve Vernon Hills High School. We need, the district-level position is to say, here are the best practices in both. Here are the efficiencies that we can create when we operate in both. Here's the staff development that we need either across the district, or that one building might need a little more of, because the change is going to be, the lift to adapt this is going to be a little bigger at Libertyville than it might be at Vernon Hills. Similar to like how we've doing PAWS, right? PAWS this year was implemented at Vernon Hills. And now, next year, a similar model's being introduced at Libertyville. And so when you have a district-level person knowing that you can coordinate the implementation across the system in a much more efficient fashion, so that the staff learning can be better in place, so that when this implementation occurs, our staff are feeling like they've been prepared, they've got notice of this, they understand the why behind it, and that they will be ultimately successful moving it forward.
Can I ask one?
Yep.
That was really comprehensive. Thank you. And got a much better idea of what this looks like. So in a year, if we were to come back and agree to fill this, and again, I'm putting you on the spot, but just off the top of your head, if we were evaluating this position in a year, what would be the three to five things that we could see in place, either differently or more robust, in a year, if this is a successful position than it would be today?
And, and I don't want to, I will share you my thoughts representing as a Building Principal and as the incoming Assistant Sup for Teaching and Learning, but other members of our administrative team will also potentially have ideas of what this could be, so I don't want mine to be the definitive. Jessica's listening, I don't want her to.
Everybody.
Right. So.
I would like to hear.
But one thing is, so we need to finalize, we have an excellent draft of our MTSS manual, which is essentially our procedures and practices that we are using across the district for our MTSS process. That needs to be finalized and implemented so that we can begin to move this process forward. That person would then need to be, our, our main focus for MTSS next year is on our ninth grade heterogeneous classes and our diagonal movers. As we are looking to create interventions to support those students, we need to be seeing evidence that the teams have been meeting, that student data has been collected, both from behavioral and an SEL and academic, and that decisions are being made about which students require intervention, and that those students are being connected to interventions that are meeting student needs. And if they're not, that new interventions or new intervention ideas are being developed and proposed for the following year to better meet student needs. So in a quick answer, that's one of the major things that this person would have. And I think also evaluating on, are the systems at Vernon Hills and Libertyville operating in a very similar fashion? Right now, we have it on paper, drawn up to be that way, but we have to make sure that when it starts working, that when we invariably hit bumps in the roads and we get data from just acting in this new way, we have to have somebody who's saying, hmm, what we thought was going to work well is not, and we're not going to wait till next year to make changes. We're going to bring the team together, we're going to evaluate this, we're going to make adjustments, and we're going to communicate that out, so that we're, we're not just spinning our wheels, but we can actually improve our practices throughout the year as it, as it goes.
And looking at Dr. Herman's experience at neighboring and equivalent districts, she has not only a doctorate in school psychology, but a doctorate of educational leadership. So what I'm seeing is somebody who is imminently qualified, also is bilingual, and is in a position based on their experience and qualifications to do the things that you described.
Right. I was very excited because Kelly Hartwig, you know, as, as a principal and as a former Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning, and as now Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, I understand special education. But we are so fortunate as a district to have an expert like Kelly Hartwig, who is our Director and oversees special education throughout the district, so that pro, students who attend Vernon Hills and have an IEP, students who attend LHS and have an IEP, get a very similar, high-quality experience, no matter which school they attend. And Kelly is our expert who is working with building personnel to always help refine and make those efforts even better. What I saw in Dr. Herman was somebody who I would be able to partner with, in the same way I partner with Kelly Hartwig, to make sure special ed is operating correctly, I would be operating with Dr. Herman to make sure our Student Services programs are operating with that same level of excellence across the system. And she would be the person who would be advising the Superintendent and Assistant Principals on the things we need to do to make sure our practices are aligned with the high level of excellence our community staff and students would expect.
And this is the job that she's been serving in, in her last two positions. So this is not a new role.
That is correct.
For Dr. Herman.
I think you alluded to that, and thank you. That's been a really good explanation. Within the buildings and the district, who are or which are the stakeholders that this role interacts with? And follow up, what are those stakeholders involved in the selection and the hiring process?
I'll let Bryant take that one.
So the direct people that they work with would be our Assistant Principals for Operations and our Assistant Principals for Student Services, and then also our Principals and myself and Kelly Hartwig, and they were all involved in the hiring process, interview process.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. There is no other discussion. Roll call.
Cole Carney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, the motion passes. Very good. Now I'm looking for a motion to accept Ellen Maurer's employment.
So I'm wondering, what happens if we don't have a motion?
If we don't have a motion and a second, if nobody makes a motion, nothing happens. So without a motion, without a second, there's no discussion, there's no vote.
Do we need to vote and make it final? One way or the other?
Well, if we want to discuss it and vote on it, we.
If there's no motion, there's no reason to discuss it.
I don't think we need to discuss it. I'm asking if we need to have a vote on it.
No. If there is no motion and second, then we don't have a vote on it.
Okay.
So it'd just be avoiding this question altogether?
I'd rather vote on it and not avoid it, but it's okay.
Carmichael, I move to accept Ellen Maurer's employment. Is there a second?
Drumkey, second.
Discussion.
I'll go first. I'm not in favor of hiring Ellen Maurer because of the charges against her while she was on our board. I don't think we can overlook that history. She also has not been in the classroom, working with students since the early 90s, nor has she worked with high school students. So I am not in favor of this employment.
Any others? Yeah, I was a little concerned by the idea that, yes, she did this thing, then she was charged with a misdemeanor, was guilty of a misdemeanor, had to serve 75 hours of community service, had to resign her position on the board. That is not no consequence. That's a consequence. She paid her debt, as far as I'm concerned. The historical aspect does make it very difficult. I mean, that's, she was a member of this board and, and did something that, that you're just not allowed to do. So I'm, I'm rather divided in my own thinking there, is all I'm saying.
I mean, the, I didn't want to discuss it, but the only expectation I have is that we bring on people to work in our schools that have an absolute clean record. It just, it just creates more, more angst, and we don't need to add more to what is already going on. So let's please hire people and bring to the board folks that have no record whatsoever.
Yeah, if I'm being frank, I'm surprised this recommendation came at all.
Just, to that point, there's nothing that, in her record, that precludes her from this kind of position. She's been in education. The question becomes, is this an appropriate hire for D128? And that's what we have to consider.
Yeah, I mean, she does have. Yeah, I mean, she did, does have. A record and on this board.
Right.
And then she's also not really been a teacher for high school students. So I, I see that as. Two reasons and it. Just makes me question a little bit, are we getting the right quality of candidates? And if we are, please let's vet them out and not have these types of things. We already have a lot of concerns about not enough teachers and the labs and all that. The people that we hire in labs, they're not teachers. They just have to be top notch. That's all I'll say.
Any other discussion? Carol, roll call.
Batson.
Abstain.
Benjamin.
No.
Carmichael.
No.
Drumkey.
No.
Hessel.
No.
Cotwell.
Nope.
Colcarney.
No.
Motion fails. Okay, moving on memorandum of agreement. This is the assigned duty stipend position. This is for the additional supports by the Board of Education at the April Board Meeting, which included teacher duty stipend positions. Additional positions are to support students in the resource centers. These will be staffed by our teachers who will receive a stipend as compensation for the extra time that they will be. Taking before school and then potentially during the lunch periods. Is that correct? If we need more supports.
That is correct. Yeah. So currently we have teachers that are assigned in a, our MASH or our ARC. At Vernon. So the MASH again is our resource area at Libertyville. The ARC is our resource area here at Vernon Hills. So we have teachers that are assigned in one of those areas with their duty. So in math, science and English. And we would like to extend this in, in the morning. And so this period would coincide with zero period PE. Which runs really from 7:50 to 8:35. School starts at 8:45. So this would be intervention support for our students in 10 through 12th grade. We worked collaboratively with the union on creating this memorandum of agreement. For our staff. So then once we look for approval for this memorandum of agreement. Then we would have our department chairs in those departments reach out to our teachers. To see who would be interested in these additional stipend positions. So currently the way the contract is, there's eight periods during the day. There's five classes for a teacher, one duty, one duty free period and plus a lunch. So those are the eight periods. We do have some teachers that do an overload. So if we have a, an extra section. And you know, everything doesn't equal to exactly five for teachers and, and somebody teaches six. We have a formula that that teacher, they would teach six classes, duty free period, prep period. And then a duty free lunch to equal their eight. So in this case, they would have five classes. Their duty during the day, a prep period, a lunch, and then another duty then before school. And then they would get compensated extra for that time.
But these are, these are the positions that have identified students for intervention. Academic intervention. Right? So these are FTEs that are going to be giving intervention. Based on recommendations from classroom teachers or.
Correct.
And were we also not talking about if it were not able to be filled by current FTE? That it would also go to other licensed educator. I mean, is it? What would the formula look like differently if we were to be bringing somebody on?
That'd be a different formula because these positions are really just that hour before school. So that would be a totally different one. And, and you know, so we.
But the expectation is that we're going to be able to fill the 16 some odd positions that we approved.
So we, yes, our goal is to fill those positions and I, and I realize that, you know, teachers. You know, may not want to do the whole school year. They may want to split with another teacher or something. And we have that option available in the MOA that that could be shared between teachers. And we would figure out how to prorate that pay then between the teachers.
I don't have any questions about this, but maybe Dr. K, as you kind of get into your. Official new role. Would like to see metrics as to how often are these? Intervention times acceptable? Are, are they being used by students? Cause if they're in sports activities or unable to drive themselves and all of those scenarios. They might just logistically not be able to. You know, participate in these. So I'd like to see what those metrics are. How are we measuring that they are actually working out for us?
Yes, absolutely. We've, and we are building this in a way that will allow us to gather that data and review it in real time. And our department chairs will also be monitoring this at their departmental level. So that if teachers are coming to them saying, I have students who require intervention or would benefit. But they can't come before school. That is one piece of information. Or that we have so many students, we don't have any slots left available before school. That would be the other piece. And we would be updating you as a board regularly on the status of these interventions. This is just one of several things we're doing, but something that. We would be monitoring and be able to report on how it's being used, what we're seeing at that, what types of students, what types of success we're having. So that if we felt we needed more from the board in terms of resources to create different experiences or more extensive experiences for students. We would bring that for, to you to consider.
Thank you.
Can I ask one other question? Do, do we have a way of tracking students in terms of like swiping in or swiping out of any one of those places? So that we know when they're there, how often they're there?
Well, yes, we do. And we're moving to digital IDs. I'll let Bryant, do you want to just kind of talk about that? We're using.
Like an app?
Well, we don't have the app, but we, on their five star app, they'll have the ability to have their digital IDs. They do scan in, in the different labs. That doesn't connect necessarily to our power school system, but in our power school unified MTSS system. We were work, we've been working with our staff to learn how to enter all of the attendance at interventions. So it'll be a much easier report for us to pull next year. And part of the work we're doing this summer. And our administrative teams are building out those templates and those kind of data reporting protocols. So that we have good, consistent data across the system next year. I know Bryant, if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is just that the more data that we are able to collect for the use of the interventions. Before school and during the day and the attendance and. All of that will be helpful in determining whether or not we do need additional resources or even have to pull back resources. So that'll be, you know, real time data that we're going to be looking at.
And if we're building that out right now. It would be great to have the input of people who are the ones that are going to be actually doing it. We don't want this to be an onerous process. They can just like scan and scan out, then life is good.
Yes, absolutely. So there have been some staff from student services. Involved in our MTSS summer work where we've been looking at that. There have been several department chairs. I don't know if some of our summer work teams that are doing some of the build outs of these. Like our LHS intervention team for literacy has met. I don't know if part of their work was to look at these or not. If that hasn't happened, then one of the things teaching and learning has to make sure happens is. When teachers are coming back to school next year. Part of, at least with these positions. I don't know if we discussed this or not, but we, we have scheduled them to start in week three. And the reason for that is week one, we want staff to be able to focus completely just on their classrooms and getting reconnected with students. During week two, then the teachers who we hire for these stipend positions. Will have a week of training and support without any students coming down to see them. And then in the third week is when we would start to assign students. It's also, as you know, Don, as a former educator. In the third week is when you're starting to give some quizzes and things like that. And we're going to start to have, if we started on day one, we might not have students necessarily needing support. But by that third week is when we start to really start to get some grades and some, some. Some initial patterns that we want to address.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I'd like to throw out, I know we've talked about it before. I don't know what it's going to look like because I don't know the mechanisms of how all the teachers are communicating with you and your department. But I'd like to see if there's some way we can keep track of. Our, our teachers who are saying that they're overburdened with offering extra help, you know? When Monica said it's going to work because her teachers do well, you know, they're going to work really hard to make this work. We'd like. I don't know what that's going to look like, but some way of showing a shift of this responsibility is moving to our interventionists. And we're seeing success there as opposed to teachers pulling the hair out. You know, using up every minute that they can to try to one-on-one support their students, which I have no doubt they're going to do. So I don't know what that looks like. I'm sorry.
No, but you've asked, you've asked that before and that is something that, so teaching and learning. Part of our work is we have Charlotte Eames, our Director of Data and Assessment and our Student Learning Analyst in our buildings. So what we can do is we can begin to talk about of the things we want to measure next year. We, we can't measure everything, but of the things we, we feel are most important to measure. How might we assess this in a way that doesn't burden teachers by having them fill out all these reports over and over again? But what would a quick and thorough and efficient way be for a teacher to give us feedback? About the quantity and the type, or I don't want to say quality, but the quantity and the types of work they're doing with students. So that we can evaluate if these interventions, which are meant to bring support to classroom teachers. Are actually having that impact or not. So that, that is something we have been thinking about and something that I think we can speak to. As we develop those ideas.
I think you. If I could just add one thing, and I'm sure you will do this, but please include the teachers in that. In that work that you just described, because you have to have their feedback, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement? Assigned duty stipend positions.
Batson, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Roll call.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
And the motion passes. I'm moving on to the IASB member dues. This is just an annual dues that are part of our agreement with the Illinois Association of School Boards. I don't know if we need to say anything else about it. We talked about it in committee.
Hessel, I move to approve the fiscal year 2025 IASB member dues.
Batson, second.
Any discussion? When you're ready.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay. And the last thing is the semi annual review of closed session minutes. Can I have a motion that the need for confidentiality still exists for all the current closed minute sessions? And those listed below shall remain in the closed file. And there's a list from January 16, 2024 through April 19, or 29, 2024.
Drumkey, so moved.
Roll call.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes and I pass the gavel to James.
Thank you. Thank you. Two items on the agenda coming out of the facilities and finance. First is the final budget adoption. And I'd like to start by saying how impressive this is to have. A school budget adopted in June. Before the budget takes effect. Most of the time this doesn't happen. So thank you, Dan, for your hard work on.
We should say most places this doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is our second year that we'll have it adopted before the next fiscal year starts. So again, I apologize. I wasn't at the committee meeting, but I did watch it and all the information there was accurate. The final budget just has a minor tweak. The net effect is the minor tweak. We're doing some updates in terms of correcting small errors, making adjustments for actual hires versus just placeholder. We can see the changes that are there. The one thing, so we have a budget right now of a surplus of 800, 871,000. I do want to emphasize again. CPPRT is a source of revenue that is of great concern to me because of the volatility. Historically, we were around 900,000 every year. And then it, one year it doubled and the next year it doubled again. And that was unexpected and very surprising. And the question was, is that an outlier? How long will that be sustained? This year we projected a decrease. Again, we don't get, we get an estimate from the Illinois Department of Revenue. But not until late in summer. So, but we've already adopted a budget by that point. When we got our estimate, it was lower than what we budgeted because the budget is just a guess. On especially on CPPRT. We still don't know what it will be. We were notified from Illinois Department of Revenue to expect it to decrease. Again, probably bigger than the decrease that already happened this year. So I have a decrease in there, but I, it's very, very likely that that decrease could be off by as much as $700,000. So 871 is our surplus. 700,000 of that could be wiped out of CPPRT because we honestly don't know. So, but I, I still feel 1.7 is, at this point, we're not going to change any of our decisions on spending is my, my assumption based on that. But there's, you know, there's other things in our budget, but the CPPRT is a particularly concerning one. That we, that I just want to keep an eye out that I'll make sure we stay updated on as the fiscal.
Do you have a ballpark what that was for FY24?
FY24, we budgeted like 2.3 and we, I don't know if we've gotten all of our revenues yet, or at least have them all booked. But we're probably closer to 2.1 million. Was I think our estimate, but so somewhere around there. And I think we have 1.7 in the budget for FY25.
Okay. Can we have a motion, please, for this? Then we'll discuss it.
Carmichael, move to adopt the FY25 budget as presented.
Colcarney, second.
Any comments, questions from the board?
No, thanks for getting it done, Dan.
Thank you for giving me the data I need in order to get this done. So I, I can't do this without knowing how many positions are we going to employ, what we're going to staff, what the pay is going to be, things like that. So a lot of the decisions that you've seen over the last several months get you to this point. So in the other just reminder is the budget requires all the board to sign. So every single one of you have to sign this sheet that Carol will have. So just a friendly reminder, please do not leave until you sign the cover sheet.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? I know we've looked at this quite a bit, so. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes. The other item on the agenda is the audit, the FY24 audit engagement letter. Each year we have to do this. A little background, Dan.
Yeah, this is our, we have an annual engagement to be audited. And so this is the, the letter that engages that and the prices associated with that. And I gave for reference the prices from last year. One thing I just want to clarify, so you have the price of the audit and then you have a few other things that we have to do that. You don't, not every district has to do depending on how much funding they get, but because we're above the threshold for federal funding, we have to have a single audit. We have to have a Cfer. And then there are other things that are. Let's just say accounting in nature, they're GASB statements. That are governmental accounting standards board, which is a, a national board that kind of dictates. Government auditing standards or accounting standards. They kind of dictate a lot of the rules in terms of audits and what financial statements have to say. There are other things that get implemented every year. We don't always know. So the auditors basically say like, we'll bill you because we have no idea how much work this is going to be. Cause they're always new. So with the reference point I gave you last year, that was about $10,000. My sense is I think it's reasonable to assume it'll be probably around there again next year. That's just want to clarify that point.
Can we have a motion, please?
Move to, oh, sorry, Carmichael. Move to approve the FY24 audit agreement with Miller Cooper in the amount of $59,300 plus the additional costs as needed.
Hessel, second.
Questions, comments by the board? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That concludes the FNF.
Moving on to items for information, we'll start with the superintendent's report. I will turn it over to Bryant and Tom.
Oh, we'll turn it over to Tom, and I know we have a presentation. We'll let Bo get that up onto the screen. Dr. Claus.
Yes, thank you. And, um, are you really leaving? Leaving during the best part of the meeting, Dan. I just, as we get started, do want to thank just one final time. This is my last official week serving as Libertyville High School Principal, a job which you know I have absolutely loved. I want to thank the students and teachers and parents of Libertyville Community and High School, of course, for all the support over the last seven years that I was with them. It was a blessing to be a Wildcat, and I know I'll always be a Wildcat, but I'm excited to now also become a Panther and a Cougar. And I was grateful for all of the partnership and always will be proud of the many great things that we accomplished together during that time. And I also want to thank the board and larger community for, for demonstrating the confidence in me as I move into this new role. We've talked about it a little bit tonight, but the only reason I ever became interested in administration was to support students and staff. That's, in my mind, the job of an administrator is to bring support to the great work that happens in our classrooms. And it is with that only intention and focus that I entered this new role of supporting our teachers and students and to help restore the great partnership between district teaching and learning teams and the building that are so important to our enduring success as a district. So that work officially begins for me on July 1st, and I look forward to the opportunity. Tonight, I'm going to just speak for a brief amount of time with an update on the academic work that we've been doing this summer. And this, it is very clear from some of our comments, as well as just the discussions that we've had with staff, that there is a concern being voiced around more freshmen in our honors courses next year and AP and honors courses. Less vetting or advising for those placements than we would have had in years past, and that therefore potentially more students struggling next year. And with that, maybe insufficient support for those students. So that is very clear to me as a, as a concern. It is something that my role as, as a, as a part of the teaching and learning team will be to be, to be focused on and to take from what our district is able to do at this point and moving forward to make sure we're not only doing the best work we can to support our students, but to support our staff in working successfully with this challenge that lies before them. So one thing that we wanted to start with tonight, we have really two goals. One is to provide you a quick update on some of the data that you requested and raised at our committee meeting, as well as give you just another update on some of the progress we're making as we move forward with our work this summer. So in terms, oh, I'm sorry, how do I move this? Do I just click? Point to you, Bo. All right, nice. So, sorry, just to catch you up, that was our goals for this evening. And if we could jump ahead to responses on data. So one of the questions that you asked as a board was about the number, the change in the number of AP honors classes being taught at both schools next year. And specifically, we had very good questions from the community around the freshman numbers as well. So on this chart, it just highlights our freshmen. This is our honors and AP sections for our core freshman department, so English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And there are some interesting aspects of, of this data. One is that we absolutely do see an increase in the number of sections that are being offered next year when we look at freshman courses in honors and AP, and it is a four-year high watermark for us. Twenty-three, twenty-four was a low watermark. So some of the increases that we will have from a one-year standpoint do look more considerable than when you look at it from a four-year standpoint. But while there are, are an increase in sections, there is also an increase in students. One thing that I do want to clarify is, yes, there are some changes in the optimums, but most of those changes that would be an increase for AP and honors classes occur at the junior and senior level. So AP Literature, for example, had an optimum of eighteen and is now an optimum of twenty-five. But freshman world, or freshman Lit and Comp honors, the optimum actually drops. It was twenty-eight before the last contract, and now it is twenty-five. And so when we look at our freshman Lit and Comp honors, yes, there's concern that we're going to have more students in those classes. But the optimums in our freshman and sophomore honors courses actually have gone down, which means like prior to this contract, if I was teaching geometry honors and freshman Lit and Comp honors, not only would I have been dual certified in English and Math, but I would have had up to twenty-eight students in each one of those sections. Next year, I would have twenty-five. Okay? Now, we can have some classes that are over optimum, and we have most that are under. Right now, as of this moment, from what I was able to tell, our freshman Lit and Comp honors and our World Lit and Comp honors are about twenty-four students per section. That, I didn't get to evaluate all of Vernon Hills data. I still am, I still am getting all my access to district level data, but I was able to access Libertyville. And our geometry honors and Algebra II honors, so freshman and sophomore advanced math classes, the optimums went from twenty-eight to twenty-five, and right now, we're about twenty-four and twenty-three average at LHS. So the information is correct in some of our upper level AP classes where we do see increases in students. There is an increase also in class size from eighteen to twenty-five. But at the freshman and sophomore level, where we have particular concerns, that one piece is not in play in terms of class sizes increasing. So one, when we look at this, at LHS, we see, you know, that we had thirty-six, thirty-seven sections, and so next year, we have thirty-eight. We can break down a little bit more with all of our classes, and this is something our administrative teams in our buildings, our department chairs and assistant principals and principals have been looking at closely since we started getting registration data in, in March. But what we see is, just as a reminder, we do see increases in English. This is LHS's data. So we see about five additional sections in AP and honors English next year. This is across grade levels. Yep. Sorry, I jumped in on the, nope, go back one. And then link, the blue link, please. Thank you. And if you could just, I don't know if you can blow that up a little bit, Bo?
Oh, it's so clear now.
There you go. So this is just a confirmation, of course, that our World Lit and Comp honors, freshman Lit and Comp honors, we see those additional sections at LHS. We also see those additional sections at this Vernon Hills. So I flipped over to Vernon Hills, Bo, at the bottom tab. And, and we see that there as well. So most of our growth in English honors and AP is at the freshman and sophomore level. Sticking with Vernon Hills in math, we also see that with the geometry honors. And with AP Precalc at Vernon Hills is a typically a junior level course. It's a new course that's in place at Vernon Hills, and that could account for some of the growth, as could APA. Then with science, and we see about an increase of one additional section next year. And at the freshman level in bio honors, they have an increase in one. Social studies at Vernon Hills, the biggest gain is in AP Psychology. Part of that has to do with APA, but more of the students there are because that class was a semester course and is now moving to a year-long course. Also, AP Psychology is considered to be an entry-level AP class. So it is a place where we would expect students who are taking their first AP class to register. The reason for that is AP Psychology is, first of all, it's the best class we teach in the high school district. As a former AP Psych teacher, I will always say that. But it is also a class that is largely dependent on student reading and on student like memorization of vocabulary and then application of vocabulary and concepts. And so that course is one that is very high interest to students, and it's one that students who are bridging and expanding their skills. This is a good first AP class for them because it moves at an AP pace with the AP volume of reading and work. But because a lot of it is high interest and concrete to them, not so much abstract, they're able to work through and develop the strategies they need to make sense of the information. And the writing aspects of AP Psychology are now being aligned with other AP Social Studies courses. So it's going to be an even better preparation for students of things like AP US History or AP Euro and AP Econ after they take this course. When we jump back to LHS, it's similar. We see the, the five increase in English. It's a three net gain in math. And we did highlight the two in geometry, the one additional section, excuse me, in Geometry Honors. For us, we see a jump in the sophomore Algebra II honors of three, we see three sections increase there. With science, we're actually down a section in terms of overall, and our bio honors freshman class is down a section. We've run it at eight sections before and we're at seven. So it is accurate that the majority of our growth with our honors and AP are, are centered around our freshman and sophomore courses. And depending on the building is the number of increase in that. Again, it's one we recognize is an increase, and we recognize that does create challenges. And we do recognize that there will be potentially more students seeking support. We do think that some of the interventions and some of the, the staff additions we're adding will be addressing this growth. We did not have lots of these supports in place in years prior. And the things that you as a board have given us resources to add are largely being designed and developed to support the increase of students in AP honors at these levels, which I'll get into in, in a few moments. Okay, so going back to the slideshow, Bo, thank you. There was a question raised at the last meeting about the number of teachers who are taking on new honors or AP classes. And what to, to answer this, I worked with the building principals and the building assistant principals for teaching and learning to review our staff assignments for next year. This was the data that we were able to identify. It's four, or excuse me, three teachers at Vernon Hills and four at Libertyville. So the way we did this was, this would be a teacher who is teaching AP or honors next year that has never taught AP and honors before. Or in the case of one teacher at Vernon Hills, they are an extremely accomplished AP teacher, but they are teaching a new AP class next year that they haven't taught before. So from our analysis, we found there are three teachers at Vernon Hills who would be new to honors or AP. And one, and four at Libertyville. One of the teachers at Libertyville, though, is a brand-new teacher, never taught in our system. And so is coming in, yes, they're teaching AP for the first time, but it's not necessarily like a new class for them that they, because every class that they have is new for them. But we did add that into the count because it's technically a new teacher to an AP class. So I wanted to provide that, that data to the board on that in terms of what we were able to determine. The question also was what support and resources do we give teachers when they're new to honors or AP? And so there's a couple of things. One is in our district and I think most districts, teachers, when you learn that you're, you get your course assignments, you have discussions with your department chair about what are the courses you want to teach and what are your preferences and the courses you enjoy teaching? And our, and our department chairs, as much as they can, try to give teachers courses they will be successful with. So some of these new assignments might be teachers who have been working to get to teach AP and been waiting their turn, so to speak, for that. Some of them might be new teachers where we had an extra section. We want to have teachers work on course teams. So, and we also, this is subjective, but in general, most people don't want to teach five of the same classes all day or four of the same. So you might have like four AP Psych classes, and instead of giving all four to just one teacher, you might give two and two or three and one. That creates a course team. So now that one of the ways new teachers on AP are supported is the teachers who have taught AP before give them curriculum materials and support and guidance, and that's your meeting with them throughout the year, as well as getting access to tests and documents and sharing of materials in that way. The other thing is for AP teachers, there are AP Summer Institutes that are offered. We have supported teachers, if they're new to an AP or even veteran teachers, but specifically, we would put priority on supporting a new AP teacher to attend an AP Summer Institute. I didn't do a comprehensive review of all, but I know of at least two teachers at LHS who are attending an AP Summer Institute. In order to develop, AP Summer Institutes are classes, courses that are taught by AP teachers who are recognized by College Board as being sort of a nationally known and high-impact AP teacher. So it is some of the best AP teachers in the country, teaching other teachers how to be great AP teachers. We make access to those opportunities available to our staff. We also, our District 128 Summer Universities and Summer Workshops are ways that we support teachers. So if you're a new AP teacher on a new course, it may be that the chair and you would put in for some summer curriculum hours so that you can work to develop and build out that curriculum. That doesn't always happen. Some teachers don't want that. Other teachers would want to do that. It's kind of at the, the teacher and at the department chair level to request those things. But in general, the, the, the teacher kind of identifies what are the supports they believe they would need. They work with their department chair to make sure that those things are either in place through the summer or through some of the follow-up types of staff learning and course team activities that happen the following year. We will go to our next slide. You asked about the PSAT and SAT data and wanting to compare this year's data with the students' prior data year and whether that would have impacted their placements or not. So if I was testing and I met standards in twenty-three, did I still meet standards in twenty-four? And how might I have moved up or down? So that analysis is actually complicated for us, and we're working on that. We didn't have time to finish it and prepare it for tonight. But we will bring it to the July board meeting. And in general, students, we tend to see upward movement in student scores. So students who, in general, in District 128, students who test at standard in one year on the PSAT eight, nine, will test at standard on the PSAT ten and on the SAT. In general, most of our students, once they meet proficiency, continue to meet proficiency. There are students who move up and down, and there are students who move up and down in, especially in subscores. So if I was on the borderline in math, but I tested proficiency, I might still be proficient overall, but I might have moved down in my math sub-score, right? So what we're going through is all of our students, all of their subscores, were they proficient, were they not? And what that's going to enable us to do is project, how might that have influenced some of our placements this year? But also, it's valuable data for us to do because it could also predict some of our placements for next year and predict what courses students might be registering for and things like that. So we'll have that data and be able to frame a discussion around that at our July meeting coming up.
I think, thank you for saying that. I think the other things you got to think about.
I think the other things you got to think about as you predict how they might do is you're going to have continuous data from their current grade, right? Their STAR tests and all of that. So you got to really work on the appropriate data model there where you could say, based on this.
Yes.
Where we think that is, it's again, not based on a single data point, which is PSAT, which, you know.
We absolutely agree. Multiple measures are best for any time we're assessing a student in any way. We want, we're all bigger than one test score and we're all more than just one day in our life. So we want to get all information possible. And that's one of the reasons why we are adding STAR to three assessments next year among all levels of our courses. It was something that we had as a tool, but again, in terms of, we weren't necessarily using it systemically across the system in all the same ways. Now, because we want to be tracking student data with multiple measures, that's one of the reasons why STAR data will be, the STAR assessment will be administered to all of our students fall, winter, spring. And that'll be another piece of data that we can look at in addition to PSAT.
Thank you. So I think as, once you've done this analysis, it would be worthwhile to, can I do a lessons learned almost, to see, now that you have all this information, what should auto-enrolling look like in the future versus maybe what we haven't done so well currently, which was based on really one data point?
Yes, right. Yep, gotcha. I will continue with just some quick updates on the student supports. So moving into this, just a very fast reminder, like when we talk about Tier 1, that is jargon, right? And it's the educational jargon. But what we're really talking about is it's the high-quality instruction and supports that benefit all students. It is universal, meaning that we offer it to every single student and it benefits all students. You might be Albert Einstein Jr. with 36 on your ACT and straight A's. But when a teacher or when a student service person is using Tier 1 instruction, you benefit from that because it is really clear, comprehensible instruction and support that all students will benefit from. But Tier 1 instruction is absolutely necessary for some students. And so while it benefits all, it is necessary for some. And while our teachers have been doing an excellent job in developing Tier 1, where we've been, a loving critique of our district is that we haven't had a full system in place that would say to teachers, here are some of the things that we would like to see in place that you as teachers have helped design to say, this is what we want to do for our freshmen. This is what we want to do for our sophomores. These kind of key instructional moves, as well as some of this student supports that we want to see implemented across our system. So it's taking those real strong professional practices and helping make sure that all teachers and all staff members are aware of them and feel comfortable and confident in utilizing them. And that is part of what teaching and learning is doing as we build out our Tier 1 practices next year. So those types of things will continue. And as I've identified there, really what we're doing there is we're trying to right-size the supports we have. So MASH and ARC is a Tier 1 support. And it is meant to be in place for all students across the spectrum. But in particular, our AP and honors students should be able to find support in the MASH. And we understand that was not in place in previous years because we were relying solely on the duty pool. And each year, as we offered more AP classes, our duty pool was shrinking because when a teacher teaches an AP class in this district, they are exempt from doing a duty. So our AP numbers were growing, which was great, but our duty pool was shrinking. And so the ability for us to offer student supports through duties was compromised. And it was not at a level that we felt was sufficient. Next year, as we build our MASH and our ARC, we are adding both the combination of certified staff through the stipends and the ESPs through the positions that we're hiring. Some of those positions will focus on our students in heterogeneous classes at the ninth-grade level. We're calling that our ninth-grade lab. But as Mr. Kelly spoke about tonight, we have created our Extension Lab, which I'll show in a moment, for our ninth-grade honors students and 10th through 12th grade students. And so we are anticipating that that support will be available for students in the upper grades who do need more intensive support than just a drop-in at the MASH. The other thing is the resources that we're adding to the MASH and the ARC will also enable students who are honors and AP students, who are seeking support in the MASH. When they go, we believe we will have those supports in place in terms of increased staff with ESPs. Also, we are going through our duty pools to say, identify exactly where do we have certified staff in which subject and where are we absent? So that if we have places where we have identified third period at Libertyville, we don't have any English teachers available in the duty pool, then we have to make sure that we're covering that with ESP. And so right now, we're conducting that analysis and trying to find out where potential gaps might be in the academic supports that we can offer students so that we can be confident that throughout the day, periods 1 through 8, all academic subjects have adequate coverage in our MASH and in our ARC. So if students are seeking that support, they would have that as one piece of academic support for them. We're going to move forward. Oh, well, yeah, I talked about that. We've seen this graphic. We have, we're spending a lot of time right now. We received criticism in two ways. We didn't communicate enough and we communicated too much. And so some folks felt we didn't communicate enough and they didn't have enough information. Others felt we communicated too much information and overwhelmed them with information. So we're taking that to heart. One of the things that I think is very important to our students and our staff is communicating visually using infographics. And so especially as we're teaching students next year, how to utilize some of these systems, which are complex. And we've spent board meetings explaining them and talking about them. Ways that we can create very quick visuals and flow charts and different infographics for students and staff to help them, and obviously parents as well, but to help people have quick understandings of some of these complex things. So that is work that is in process. And we anticipate, as we start next year, having a number of different resources available to students, parents, and staff to help them navigate and utilize the various supports that we're putting in place. The next one. So we've talked about this one, the MASH and the ARC, and how we are building that out. We'll move to the next one. Last meeting, you asked for sort of a side-by-side, oh, pause, we've discussed. So just on a side-by-side with the labs. So it's a similar model being done in different ways. Our freshman lab is our ninth graders, and that is for students in Biology, Algebra I, and in Freshman Lit and Comp. So this is all students in those courses. If they are struggling with the core standards to show the mastery or proficiency with the core targets or skills, those teachers would, we've been working to build the process, the intervention form, where the teachers would refer those students to the lab coordinator. The lab coordinator would be assigning those students to a lab intervention. It would be during the student's lunch period, half of their lunch, 25 minutes. And it could be up to three times a week at Vernon Hills. And I want to double-check that. I think it's Vernon, I don't want to misspeak. So I think Vernon Hills, it's four times a week because they go to, they go to their freshman transition one day a week. And at Libertyville, they go to freshman transition two days a week. So the intervention could be up to three days. So in other words, we always want to, out of five days, students always have to have lunch. Two days a week at Libertyville, the other half of their period is freshman transition, which is a very important program. And so then they have three days to potentially go to intervention to get support in English, math, executive functioning, or science. Okay? With the 10th, or with ninth-grade honors through 12th graders, we've built a similar model that we're calling the Extension Lab. And that is what is being run by our teachers through the stipends that we've created before school. Many of our upperclassmen prefer to come before school for their interventions because their after-school time is filled with activities, clubs, and sports. We do realize that we might have students who require intervention and have difficulties accessing them before school with the buses. So one of the things we're looking at, as Bryant alluded to, is the potential of maybe splitting some of those interventions into A and B blocks, where an A block would be 750 to about 815, and a B block would be about 815 to 830. Even if that is a 15-minute touch base for a student, it's something that we could use as a way to work to support them. If we find a lot of students in need of support that can't access before school, that's where we would be coming to the board and saying, here are some alternatives that we've created to meet the needs of this population of students. Because we do not want any of our students, if this is, if this intervention is proving to be valuable and supportive, we want to make sure that bus riders have the ability to take advantage of that as well. So starting the year, we won't necessarily have that, but that is something we will be keeping a close watch on. The main difference in this is the time of day. Freshmen during lunch, upperclass before school. And that some of the freshman ones will largely be taught with ESP. And the upperclass, our Extension Lab are with staff, certified staff members receiving stipends. So similar intervention model being staffed differently and being run at different times of the day. Okay. Moving forward then, I don't want to belabor this, but this, we've been working to fine-tune throughout the summer, the referral process. So whether it is for the ninth-grade lab or for the Extension Lab, the teacher initiates that process and is part of moving a student forward. So basically, what the teacher will do is they will work to put really great instruction in front of students. And when they are seeing a student who is continuing to struggle despite really solid classroom instruction, they would be referring those students to the lab coordinator or the department chair, who would then be working to connect those students to the intervention and communicating with the student's family about that intervention and the student's counselors. The other way that students can be placed in intervention is through the student's counselor or the MTSS process. So an individual teacher could identify individual skills in one individual subject that a student is struggling with. But the MTSS team has a more global view of a student, and they may see a student is in need of support in ways that a teacher doesn't necessarily see from their perspective. So a student can be recommended and placed in these labs through either direction. We wanted to make sure that it was both teams of people working to support our kids had the ability to place them in the interventions. That's what that slide shows. And then as we move forward, our progress on student supports is what I've just discussed. In the memo, we kind of just share some of the nitty-gritty details of the meetings we've had and things like that. As we move forward to students, we could just kind of go through that, Beau, to the next one. We have invited our diagonally-moving students to our Summer Success Workshops on July 30th and July 31st. And we have also invited freshmen who will be new to honors and AP. Students have until July 17th, I believe, to sign up for those. And we will, excuse me, I had a hiccup there. We will be sending additional reminders and information to families so that kids have multiple reminders about signing up for this should they choose.
So which students were invited to participate in these, just to be clear?
The 255 students that we've identified as current students who are diagonally-moving have been invited. And my understanding is that this week, we also invited ninth graders who have registered for AP or honors courses as well. So it's a significant number of students who have been invited.
What is the expectation in this workshop? What are they going to do? What's the outcome?
So largely, that is being developed right now. The curriculum for that is being created. But in general, what happens at these workshops is it's a combination of mindset and skill. So the mindset piece is spending time with students, helping them understand that they are taking a step up in terms of the rigor of academics that they may be accustomed to, that we're celebrating that, and that we know that there are going to be times when they struggle and that that's okay, and that we talk a little bit about how that is what builds your skills and builds your strength. It conveys our message that we believe in their ability to get through those challenges when they are encountered. And then the skill piece is, here are some proactive skills that you do that successful students, yes, they're intelligent, but they also have strategies that they use in order to be successful. So we review some core fundamental executive functioning strategies like organization, note-taking, and study strategies with our students to have in place. And then we do reactive skills in terms of when you're struggling, where do you go? Here are the people who staff these places. Here's how you access and utilize these places. Here's what you do when you go to those places so that you can be targeted with your help. It's beyond just go to the MASH when you need help because a student could walk in there and maybe in the past not have felt like, I really know what to say or how to utilize this. It's helping them see, here's why you go to the MASH. And when you come in there, this is what you do in these spaces. This is how help is given to you and delivered. And this is how successful students are able to utilize these resources for support.
Tom, who's going to be developing the curriculum for that day?
That is being developed largely by our Teaching and Learning Team. Larry Varn and Ben Rodriguez are the point people on that. I'll be participating in that. And our Assistant Principals for Teaching and Learning will be participating in that as well.
And who's going to be delivering the course?
Right now, Larry and Ben are planning to. I was hoping that they would let me be part of it as well. And they are inviting AP teachers from the buildings to co-present with them, as well as some AP students who want to help co-present.
If you need me to put in a good word for you, just let me know.
Thank you. I may need a letter of rec. So. Moving forward then, staff support. We've talked about this, about some of the work we're doing this summer. But Teaching and Learning Team has met with our instructional coaches and we have begun to create a really strong focus for next year. We heard very clearly about too much and it's hard to get my arms around any one thing because there's so much to focus on. So from a professional learning standpoint, we have begun to really identify, what are the things our staff is being asked to do as part of the strategic plan next year? What are the things our staff is being asked to do to confront these heterogeneous classes, as well as the higher numbers of students in our AP and honors? And what would the staff learning needs be? And how would we deliver those in a way that are clear, coherent, and efficient to our staff throughout the school year? So we have begun to identify what are the days that the district has, when our district staff development days? What would be the potential agenda items for that? We won't finalize any decisions because we know our larger teacher voice is important in that. So the goal is to begin to develop the framework and have a strong framework in place that we would bring to our LMC, our Learning Management Committee, as well as to our teachers through departments to say, here's what Teaching and Learning is thinking. Help us refine this, give us feedback on this. And then we would be able to finalize our focus for the '24, '25 school year, have our calendar set so that teachers are well-aware of when different things are being offered and where different supports are being delivered.
I have, I think that all sounds really good, but it's all happening between now and school starting?
Yes.
Okay, because my worry has always been that it still feels like we're pushing all the way to the end. And I know you've kind of got into your role late here. So I think you've done a really good job with the time you've had.
Yeah, ideally, we would have this, ideally, we would have this done in like March or April so that when staff leave, they would know, here's the focus of the summer. Because summer is a great time, like I loved doing my staff development during the summer as a teacher. But not all staff can do their staff development in the summer or want to. So ideally, in the future, we would have a staff development plan that would be created with the input of teachers and administrators that would be developed and distributed in the late spring. So that staff would know, okay, these are the things I can sign up for in the summer. These are the things that if I don't do in the summer, will be available for me when I come back next year at our institute days or at our, our department collaborations that my department chair will be leading.
So for this year though, then are, is there any catch-up needed or some provision? Given that, you know, you've, they have lost a few months for, in terms of being able to plan that?
So help me understand catch-up, catch-up for the teachers or?
Right. I mean, as you said, you know, the plan and all of this would have been in place in March, right?
Ideally.
If everything was going for plan, but now it probably won't be ready till?
August.
August.
Yep.
That's been literally a few weeks before school starts or maybe after school starts. So how are teachers going to sort of catch up the three months, four months that they, they don't have the opportunity to do that over summer anymore because they're giving it to them after?
Yeah, I do think though, I don't think many teachers went into the summer not knowing what options were available to them to support them in work they wanted to do or felt they needed to do. So our department chairs at the end of the school year were working very closely with their teachers in terms of what their staff assignments are and what the challenges of those assignments would be. And teachers had the ability to participate in summer workshops and things this summer to build out some of these things and to get their skills and some of their resources in together. There will be teachers who maybe did not participate in those. Every single year, that's the case where we have work that we're doing. And I, I feel it's more about deepening teacher skills. So there would be some teachers who didn't have the opportunity to deepen some of the skills they may have wanted to this summer. But next year, that's where we would be putting those in place. So whether it's through a lunch and learn, whether it's through our district's official institute days, whether it's through a department chair saying, a number of our teachers are dealing with this challenge this year. I'm going to devote my twice monthly meetings and collaborations to focusing on that so that all of us as a department can build out our skills. I think that's how we would be managing that. And for us, the part of the, part of the way we help teachers with that is not put new things on their plate. So our, our intention is that our focus is on helping our staff create the environments with their students of belief and belonging and really having the tools they need and the knowledge to do really solid tier one instruction in whatever department or whatever class they're teaching. Really bringing that, those tools to them and helping them develop new strategies that they can use with students.
I might be jumping ahead, but as much as this is about preparing them and training them and giving them, isn't it also about offering them time to communicate with?
Absolutely. That's on another slide. So what we've done there is we have, this was summer learning, but we'll go forward. So we've done both of these things with staff who teach on the same course team and are in classes that are being heavily impacted with diagonal movers or honors students, AP students who are new to that. We have prioritized the master schedule building to give those teachers a common plan time. And so there are approximately 12 or 13 courses that have been prioritized with the input of our department chairs of these are the courses where all of the teachers on that team would have common plan time. So if they wanted to meet every single day, they theoretically could. Most of our teachers certainly would not do that because that's, wouldn't be necessary. But they have a period in their day when they're all free at the same time to meet if they choose to. So that has happened. The second thing is we have made it very clear to our department chairs that if they have teachers who are on a course team and need extended time to meet, to review student assessment data or to work on their next unit to better meet the needs of students that they've been encountering, they can move for half-day workshops or full day. And we, as a Department of Teaching and Learning, would be supporting our department chairs in that in making sure that the teachers had the resources they needed and that the subs were connected to the classes. So that's the, the time piece. Moving forward, Bryant, do you just want to finish up with some of the staffing progress we're making?
Some of the staffing progress that we're making, because again, we have the positions that are all posted. We are diligently working to fill those positions. People are applying. We've advertised through our current staff. They're a great resource to friends and colleagues and family members to get them to apply. We're on the Lake County Regional Office of Education website. We have some other external places that we posted our jobs. And so we are collecting resumes. Our department chairs are, and our building administration are working to hire those positions. We do, besides these positions that are new to us, we also have other positions that we are still working to hire from special education teacher aides here at Vernon Hills, EL aides at Libertyville. But we are working to fill all of our positions and are hopeful that we'll have our positions filled by the beginning of school time.
That, we can just end at this point, Beau?
There was a question that was raised by a community member about slide 17. So if you could go to that. About inviting the 225 new diagonal movers into the honors and AP to attend one day student success workshop. You talked about that. You want to teach that. That'd be good. That is the one?
I'd love to be part of it, not be the only teacher, but?
Right. Cause it's going to be students and teachers.
Yes.
I just want to check on how those invitations went out. How did people hear about it? Cause there's, there's some confusion out there about people maybe not have gotten that message.
I will need to check on that. Those were sent out by another member of our team. So I will check on that and verify how it was delivered and kind of make sure that, that that was done in a way that would provide full access.
Super. Thank you.
What other questions do we have? Okay. Thank you. That was a very comprehensive and easy to understand report. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we have no IISB report, board comments and events. I just do want to pass on congratulations. There was an Ed Red event that was held here at Vernon Hills High School on June 10th. It was a mini summit. It was very well attended. And the feedback from the Ed Red president was that everything was perfect and everyone on the school staff, including both the IT as well as custodial, was terrific. And I just want to say how much Ed Red appreciates being able to access Vernon Hills High School for that event and how smoothly it went. So kudos to everyone. Thank you.
I attended that event. Just so you know. Yeah, the workshops are great. You could just pop into whichever ones you wanted. And it's great networking. So seeing so many other board members from all across the county. Got to talk to the regional superintendent. So it's, it's good. You get to see lots of people.
That's great. Any other board comments or events? Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move on to our CDAL report. Sorry about that. All right. Just real quick. We, this was kind of a, you know, a big meeting to get a lot done before we kind of recess for summer. We won't be having another meeting until fall. But the governing board elected new governing board officers and appointed our executive board members. We recognize the retirement of the superintendent of CDAL, Valerie Donan. We currently have co-interim superintendents for CDAL. We approved our fiscal year 25 budget and set our meeting dates for the upcoming school year. And perhaps the biggest thing that we covered in our meeting was this area of focus called CDAL Focus for the Future. And it deals with tuition restructuring for the co-op. And so Dan and Bryant and Denise and even Kelly Hartwig were at a meeting, I believe, on the 13th for member districts to kind of discuss the options. So there may, you know, the involved committees focusing on that restructuring will bring us more information on those and the member districts, I assume will either vote or somehow otherwise decide what restructuring plan is going to be working best for the co-op as a whole.
So is the restructuring a result of fewer members and rising costs? Do you have a sense of what's driving the restructuring?
Do you want to take it? Great.
I wouldn't say fewer members, rising costs is a significant concern. So a trend you're seeing in, in our budget notes, we have private tuition increasing 20% in one year. Because of private schools and the cost that they're incurring, no different than at CDAL. But they're a public school. And so we are kind of seeing a similar trend in terms of rising costs and increasing needs and just increasing, part of the cost is compensation too for folks and for all of that, for their new contracts. So I, I think another thing is they're trying to get their system structures financially in place for the long term that I don't think they have right now. In order to make sure that CDAL stays fiscally solvent. So basically they've realized they don't charge enough tuition to cover their actual costs. And they're running out of solutions to do that other than increasing tuition. So there, but there's a variety of ways you can do it. What do you include in tuition? What do you, what do you kind of discount? All of those kinds of nuances is really the meeting that they're talking about. But this is really a structural issue that CDAL is trying to solve.
Thank you. So assuming that when you're solving a structural issue and costs are growing up 20%, that means that our costs to participate are likely going to go up. If and when that happens, will we have time to prepare in our budget for that increase?
The increases they're talking about are fiscal 26. They don't have a timeline yet.
They're set for 25.
Yeah. So this could be, so Val's sense, there's no, there's no map for this yet. Their sense was 26 is the soonest they could implement this, but it's very likely when you have such a big change that you phase it in over multiple years. So right now they're in the exploring stage with some of the member, well, as many of the member districts as they can get. The finance people, the sped people, the superintendent people together to try to talk about the pros and cons of different options. And then once they've kind of figure out the option, then the timeline of implementation is what they would probably need to figure out next.
I guess my question just is really if, because CDAL is a significant expense for us, if the costs are going to go up by 20%, just having the opportunity to budget for that is, is my concern.
CDAL, I believe, has consistently done a good job of giving us advance notice on changes in costs. And I don't, I don't foresee that changing.
And some of the options they're floating right now are for districts to kind of use services almost as needed or for what, what they need rather than dishing out to cover the entire needs of the co-op.
To move an à la carte?
Kind of, yeah. And, you know, a lot can change year to year when various school districts take back programs. So I mean, that happened to us, you know, and anything's possible in terms of what member school districts kind of have in the works for their own retake plans, which is not a bad thing. It's just something that happens from time to time.
I think in the industry, you're seeing a growing awakening to the idea that the closer we can get students back to the classroom with every other student, the better for them. And so some of that question is, all right, should, should CDAL really focus on things that are just hard to replicate for districts? Or should CDAL be a really wide berth of options? Or should CDAL maybe try to incentivize districts to take back programs that really makes sense to take back? So all those are part of the questions that they're trying to ask. And in terms of how it might impact us actually, it depends on the option and it depends on where our kids are. Not every program is treated equally. So we, you know, we don't necessarily, we won't, we won't know the impact yet. But that, but that's something that we, particularly Kelly, is extremely focused on keeping up to date with.
And I think it was really important for the governing board and the executive board to underscore to its member districts that CDAL is not looking to change the services provided to students, but simply change how these services are funded long-term. So it's, it's not an issue of quality of service. It's simply an issue of, you know, future funding. Okay. Thank you. I think we're going to move on to future agenda items. We see the items listed here. Would anybody like to add any other future agenda items to these items listed?
I'll just note that especially for the public, these are both PMP and FNF, the two committees, and our board meeting all in one night for July. So just to make note of that.
Yes, it is customary.
Schedule.
Yes, to have a summer schedule plus. And at this point, we are looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Carmichael, so moved.
Good to all second.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Oh, we can do a voice vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you, everyone.